So but first, Dr. Willis.
Thank you, Matthew. Good morning, everyone. Matt Willis, Public Health Officer. Al, could we bring up my my slides? I'll I'll share a brief presentation that will review our our numbers for Marin County as of today, and then review some of our key priorities for the next for the next week. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this is the total cumulative cases in Marin County since since our first case, which is about 160 days ago. Remembering that was our our first case was a gentleman who had been on the Princess cruise ship. And unfortunately, it was also our first death. Since then, we've had 1,151 cases. I'm sorry, 3,151 cases in addition to that case. And what's important, I think, for for the community to recognize now is that that shaded area is a is a is a note to interpret this data with caution. People may be aware that there was a problem with the state database that collects test results and reports them to local health departments. There was about 300,000 records going back over a period of two to three weeks that were arriving in the state database that because of a delay and a server problem there, never made it to local health departments. In Marin County, we have been relatively less affected by that problem than most counties because we have established direct reporting relationships with laboratories. And get the majority of our data comes through direct daily feeds from the laboratories themselves. However, we do rely on that Cal Ready system, which is that state database for some fraction of our data. So we're still waiting for for that resolution and should have kind of reliable and and clear data historically by the end of the week. So until about Friday, make sure that, you know, as you're looking at any data that you're understanding that we're still trying to reconcile that with the with the state. Next slide, please. This is our total total persons tested. We've had we've tested almost 56,000 people, which is about one about one one fifth of our total population in Marin County. We have 122 people total hospitalized and 56 total deaths since the start. Importantly, the bottom there currently hospitalized, there are 16 people in the hospital currently in Marin County, 13 from the community, and three from San Quentin Prison, which is the lowest numbers of people in the hospital we've had in about the past two months. Next slide, please. This is shows our daily testing rates as well as the percent positivity. And the the drop off there again is is partly attributable to delays in the state testing. We also importantly, because we're looking at the percent positivity, we actually have to look about two weeks back for this particular indicator to make sure that we're matching the number of negatives with the number of positives. Negatives come take a lot a lot longer time to come back. Next slide, please. This is the demographic breakdown of our cases. And on the left, you see age. And this reinforces what we know to be the experience nationally with COVID-19, obviously disproportionately affecting older people. In Marin County, about 96% of our of our deaths are among people aged 65 or greater, and 70% of our deaths are among people aged 80 or greater. And about 75% to 80% of those are people who are residents of long term care facilities. Next slide, please. This shows the demographic breakdown of our cases and reinforces again that Marin County is is an exaggerated version of what's being seen across the state in terms of what I showed in terms of the age profile. And now here in terms of our race ethnicity of our cases. People who identify as Hispanic or Latino make up 16% of our population as a county, but 75% of our cases. Next slide, please. This shows hospitalization rates per capita for all counties across the Bay Area. And what it shows is that Marin County, while we have higher rates, you know, we have been doing a lot of testing and we're testing in communities where we have high prevalence, which is important. So we we need to look at our hospitalization rates to determine what the true burden is. And what this shows is that our rate of hospitalizations is among the lower rates across the Bay Area. And in fact, if we were to take this data out to today where we have only 16 in the hospital, we would have the lowest hospitalization rate of any of those counties listed on this as the in the wider Bay Area, which is important as a caveat because our if we look at the numbers of positive tests, we look at the rate of illness or at least of positivity, we have one of the highest rates of cases, but one of the lowest rates of hospitalizations, which is a sign that we're we're doing a lot of effective testing. Next slide, please. This is I haven't been sharing modeling on most of our most of my updates, partly because, you know, I, as someone who has done modeling, I recognize the limitations of that methodology for really predicting the future. But I wanted to share this because this is this the modeling is getting better. The there are more and more more and more different agencies and academic institutions that are performing modeling. And now there are aggregates where they take together multiple different modeling methodologies and combine them into a single predictive model. This is a new model called Calcat, and it takes 10 different models into into account. So the models that are being performed at Johns Hopkins and Stanford and London College of Medicine, et cetera, are combined into a single aggregate. And this offers a glimmer of of hope if this is in fact accurate. And again, it's too early to know. But what this shows is that our rate of transmission in Marin County has decreased significantly over over July. We saw, as we all know, significant increases in transmission in June that led to spikes in cases in late June because the transmission precedes the the spike in the cases and the hospitalizations. We've seen degrees decrease in hospitalizations now, decrease in in rates of positive cases. And the model here suggests that are are not the effective the the rate of transmission, that is, the number of individuals that anyone who is affected might be expected to infect another person. If the are not was or are effective was two, that would mean any individual in the county is infecting two others. If you can get that number below one, it means that you're actually going to start seeing less transmission overall because each person that's infected is actually not even necessarily infecting even one other person. And that's how we kill this, you know, that's how the pandemic will end is getting that are not the are effective below one. In Marin County, this is estimated to be right now 0.78. So it is below one according to this model currently. We will be watching this closely. But this is encouraging news for everyone who has been taking all the steps and making the sacrifices we've all had to make to try and flatten the curve. That that work seems to be taking taking hold here in Marin. Next slide, please. This is the this. So those are those are the numbers. And I'm just going to offer two of the two of the big priorities for this week. One is the shelter in place order. We are on the California Department of Public Health County monitoring list. We have greater than 100 cases per 100,000 residents over the past two weeks. That's the metric. That's the indicator the state uses to determine that we're on the monitoring list. It sets limits for what we can open and and can't and when. On August 11th, so today, we are moving forward with personal services outdoors. We had allowed outdoor hair salons. We're expanding that to include outdoor nail salons, massage, estheticians, facials, et cetera, but not tattoos or body piercing because the state does not allow that those activities. And then planning, looking forward for August 24th, our plan will be to move forward with opening hotels and short term rentals to even non essential workers. Those have been open to essential workers. If our countywide incidence remains below 200 cases per 100,000 residents for the prior two weeks, for on Friday, August 21st, we'll be looking at our data to ensure that we've been successful in keeping our transmission to lower than 200 cases per 100,000 residents. And if we've met that benchmark, we will move forward with opening hotels and short term rentals. And at that point, we would be aligned with the state order for counties on the monitoring list. So anything that the state allows any county that's on the monitoring list, we would be in line with that. Next slide, please. Finally, to schools. Due to our status on the monitoring list, we are unable to open classroom based learning, again, based on being over 100 cases per 100,000 over the past two weeks for the governor's order. However, the state does allow opening of schools with approval of the local public health officer and California Department of Public Health, despite that status on the monitoring list through a waiver application. And so we are finalizing that application and have communicated to the school community that we will be sending the the waiver application itself out this coming Friday after it's been finalized. The elements of the application will include that they have to adhere to Marin County Public Health and Marin County Office of Education joint recommendations for reopening. There's a 30 standards that we've established for what's necessary for schools to reopen more safely. A what includes a a school site specific protection plan according to the Marin recovers process where any business that wants to open needs to cite and 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 post that plan, the same for the schools. And they we have developed the template for that. We also want to make sure that every school that seeks to reopen has a plan for testing. One of the most important elements of being able to reopen safely is going to be the ability to make sure that staff are tested on a regular basis. And if there's cases in the school community to test any students that may have been exposed. And that's not something that that because of the number of schools that the public health is going to be able to provide to every single school. So we really need schools to be more independent in that space. And that needs to be attested to in that waiver application process. And we will prioritize those that can optimize outdoor space and those that have a demonstrated commitment to educational equity. The earliest that any school would reopen is September 8th, the day after the after Labor Day, which gives us process to time to finalize the application process and review them. Next slide, please. One of the most important concerns for us from a from a an educational and public health perspective is the equity concerns. It is, you know, possible that the 2020 2021 school year could widen unacceptable inequities in education. We know that distance learning disproportionately hurts low income families. That seems to be the direction we are headed with the governor's order. And the fact that we will not likely be below that number of 100 cases per 100,000 over the past two weeks for, I would estimate, at least two months. Public schools are less likely to apply for waivers to open than private schools. We already have a number of applications for waivers. We have sent them back saying, please wait until we offer you the standardized template for the waiver application. But it has signaled to us that there's a lot more private schools that are seeking the waiver application so far than public schools. Family of families of means are finding alternatives in ad hoc learning pods with instruction. And we're concerned also that unstructured out of classroom arrangements can increase risk of transmission. There is no guarantee that by not having children gather in classrooms that we are actually going to have less mixing of children because there are other arrangements are being made in groups of kids in in less structured ways perhaps. And that might be differentially experienced, especially in low income communities. So there's another there's another concern there that the risk for disease actually might even be increased as well as well as the educational harms associated with the distance learning approach. So the opportunities there are to first, for all of us, drive down prevalence to allow schools to open. That would be the ideal is if we're able to get below 100,000, you know, 100 cases per 100,000, we're free to reopen schools, no longer on the monitoring list. We have this the procedures policies in place. We've worked a lot with the school community to be able to reopen safely. And that would be that's our our shared goal is to is to work together to continue to reduce transmission so that we can take the step to reopen a classroom based learning. In the meantime, we need to make sure that the waiver application process does support equity. And we're finalizing that application this week. And we need to support out of classroom educational structures for low income children. And I say structures because it's not just it's not just educational opportunities, it's it's infrastructure. It's the the places where they might gather together, the technology that's available to them, the instructors that are brought to bear onsite so that they're able to have a meaningful educational experience outside of the classroom setting. And to those goals, there's been an educational equity task force that's been established that will be working with Marin County Office of Education, County of Marin, and other key stakeholders to design a process to ensure that we're minimizing the equity impacts as we as we go into this unique school year. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. Let's see, do we want to do Angela and then we'll take questions? All right, Angela, a report on enforcement.
Good morning, board members. Good. So since we opened our enforcement email box, we've received in excess of 500. 120 of those complaints have been in EHS licensed businesses, which includes restaurants and grocery stores across the entire county. 84 of those complaints have been with businesses and short term rentals in our unincorporated areas. And then 300 are not EHS licensed businesses. So about 150 of those are in cities. So businesses like bookstores or things that don't have food in them that are not EHS licensed. And then about 150 about outdoor gatherings, mask wearing, or then general comments that we've received from the community. So I just want to kind of refresh everyone's recollection about the path that we're taking on enforcement. So we really have two paths that we've set up. We have the mask wearing, the lack of mask wearing path for enforcement. Tickets range in for that part of the enforcement effort from $25 to $500. And that is really being enforced by local law enforcement. So our sheriff's office and then city and town police departments. If they, you know, the goal is to hand out masks and to make sure that people are wearing masks. If they really can't get somebody into compliance, then a ticket is a tool. A citation would be a tool that they have in their tool belt that they could issue. On the business side, we've really developed a task force model. There are a few cities that are smaller and are not participating in the task force. But generally, most cities are participating where we are putting pooling resources, code code and compliance resources so that when we get complaints, a joint task force goes out into those organizations to make sure they're complying. Again, our goal is information. I mean, our goal is to get into those businesses, to give people information, to make sure they have the right signs posted, to make sure they're complying with employees wearing masks. In the event that we can't get them to comply, we would issue a citation. And in those instances, the citations range from $50 to $10,000. And that can be based on individual violation of the shelter in place order. So at this point, we've reached out to a lot of businesses that we've received complaints about and are working with people to get them into compliance. And then later in the week, the task force will actually be out. Sorry, task force will be out around the community, meeting with businesses and making sure that we're that businesses are falling into compliance. So it's it's moved a lot. We've we've worked really collaboratively with the cities. I'm happy to announce that we're able to do this jointly, which I think is the best use of resources. And I think one thing that people that the email box isn't for people that are witnessing specific people not wearing masks. This is really a business compliance email box. And so that's something that I would just like the community to know that that's not where you would report my neighbor's not wearing a mask. Although certainly we are forwarding things that are in cities, like if there are large group gatherings, those types of things, we are forwarding those complaints directly to the cities. And they're looking at trend data to see if there are places that they really need to be monitoring more carefully to ensure that we don't have ongoing spread of this virus. So I'm happy to entertain any questions about enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Angela. So questions from board members on on either of these reports related to COVID? Damon.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and and thank you for both of the reports. A couple of things for you, Dr. Willis. I think you hit on the first question, but just to double confirm on the issue of hotel reopenings. That's an issue we're hearing a lot from our Marin Economic Recovers Task Force members on particular interest of theirs. So just to confirm, it sounds like we are on a pathway toward reopening depending on the per 100,000 case number data. Is that right?
Yep, for you will look on Friday, the 21st and look back at the previous two weeks. And if that number is less than 200, our plan will be to move forward that following Monday with reopening hotels and short term rentals.
Great. And then a particular interest of concern has been around congregate living settings or senior centers, skilled nursing facilities and the like. Can you give an update on on that situation?
Yes, we had, you know, the over the past month, there was a lot of activity in two of our two of our larger long term care facilities were both experiencing outbreaks. And, you know, that's an illustration of the particular vulnerability of that setting. What we've learned is that, and it's, you know, true statewide and nationally is that the word community transmission, the rates of community transmission are highly predictive of the rates of outbreaks that occur in these settings because it's due due to staff who who may be totally asymptomatic, who bring it into that setting and may may infect residents unknowingly. And then it can spread very rapidly within that setting. And so we've really emphasized staff practices, protocols, staff testing. A health officer order that requires every facility test all their staff monthly on a quarter of the staff every week on a rolling basis. More and more facilities are now procuring direct relationship with testing agencies to to do that testing. And when we when we test, we find cases. And those are cases that would otherwise have been undetected and and may have led to transmission within those facilities. So that's been an important strategy. And then also, we've learned, you know, that when there is an outbreak and it so far, we haven't had a problem of evacuations of facilities, but that has been happening more frequently around us outside of Marin County. And we have a task force now dedicated to make sure that the staffing is assured in settings where there are they are seeing increased cases so that we don't have to send people and further disrupt their lives and their families out of those facilities just because there may not be enough staffing on site. In some cases, in other hospitals, in other counties, people have actually been transferred into hospitals and taking up hospital beds just because they didn't have enough nurses, for example, at a skilled nursing facility. So those are two of the more important strategies. There's there's right now five facilities that are having active transmission. And we're in regular communication with them on a daily basis to to manage their testing up, their testing operations and make sure that they have all the PPE they need and that they have the technical assistance to to prevent transmission.
Thanks.
Supervisor Sears.
So thank you, Dr. Willis and Angela, for your presentations. Angela, I wanted to follow up on the masking piece of things because it's often a little confusing. And I and I do understand your guidance that it's not appropriate for any of us to email or call in with a complaint about our neighbor not wearing a mask, as annoying as that might be. But it am I correct that it would be appropriate if if I'm out and about and I'm in a downtown area somewhere in a shopping area and I see large groups of people who are not masked in particular parts of of my town or my city, it it would be appropriate to report that kind of behavior? Is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. Those are things that we'll send on to the cities and they are looking for that data to see where they should have increased enforcement.
And then there is the issue of people perhaps not wearing masks when they're doing indoor retail. Does that fall into the the business enforcement or the mask enforcement? Or it sort of straddles the two? How does that get handled?
Yeah, it's more the mask enforcement. We don't want we don't expect that businesses will have confrontations with people attending, people visiting their stores who are not wearing masks. That being said, what we expect businesses to do is to post the signs, to have their employees in masks and to make sure there are proper sanitizing procedures in the store. But if there's a person that comes into the store, we certainly would not expect a business owner to get into a confrontation about a with a resident. That would be more something that we would handle as a mask enforcement.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Judy.
Thank you, Angela. And Dr. Willis, I had a question. Are we are you still looking at evaluating things every two weeks? Changes that we've made, for example, the the stores and the restaurants that that are now today able to to work outside? Do you look at that and then say, okay, it's really good. So now they can move inside and is it still every two weeks or has that changed?
And go ahead, Angela.
Well, since we're on the watch, the state watch list, I think what Dr. Willis mentioned earlier is that once hotel if hotels open, we will be identical to where the state is for allowing open businesses for for counties on the watch list. We're not allowed to open indoor restaurants or anything else indoor because we are we have an incidence of over 100 cases per.
So then it's at the state.
It's really, yeah, it's at the state level.
Yeah, I should add that that over 90% of the population of of the state of California is in a county on the monitoring list. So it's essentially de facto, this the pace of the state right now is the pace for the monitoring list counties.
Thank you.
Dennis.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Willis and Angela Nicholson. Dr. Willis, I was wanted to talk to you about the 200 cases per 100,000 data that we're looking for on the 21st because I think there's concern in that industry about, well, what happens if we return over the 200 number? Then is it a state action that might trigger something or is it both state and local? Because these are people that are booking reservations out into the future. So I know there's some concern about, well, what would happen if we return over that 200,000 per 100,000? And is that then a state decision or is it local or both?
The state, the state allows us, despite our status on the monitoring list, to open hotels and short term rentals. The decision to not take that step was a local decision based on our our prevalence as being almost twice that rate and the fact that Marin County is a destination county. So that that decision carries different implications for us in terms of a more explicit invitation for leisure travel. So that would be a local decision and we would not we would not tie, we would not close if the if the rate went, you know, specifically closed hotels and short term rentals. If that rate went above 200, we would take, you know, the the whole of all of the data that's available to us to guide any decisions regarding shelter in place elements together and make decisions about sector by sector. And so that we're we're aware of the, you know, the the disruptive nature of closing and opening and closing and opening, and we would not, we would not take that step. So that was that's really the criteria for for opening. It would not be used as a criteria for closing.
With that said, Dr. Willis, the state could choose to restrict hotels down the line depending on the incident for those counties on the watch list. So, you know, we don't control what the state might do.
That's right. And and hotels were one of the one of the last to be allowed because they are one of the, you know, do do encourage travel.
Yeah, and and to that point, the the rules have been known to change around coming down from the state in terms of tightening and or loosening. So there's no way to predict with whether any of the anything that stands today in terms of benchmarks or, you know, cases per 100,000 for doing X or Y are going to hold. But I think the good news is, if I heard you right, Dr. Willis, is that our our positive case rate is declining slowly. We're on a good trend that way as well as hospitalizations. So we're we're doing some things right and we need the community to stick with it so that we don't so that we don't backslide regardless of what the state does. I have a question. With regards to the the schools and the you're looking into create, you know, the criteria and the focus and the understanding that distance learning is disproportionately hurting our lower income, our community of color, the same the same populations that have been hit harder by COVID and all other sorts of things. My question is, is I'm assuming that other counties are experiencing exactly the same thing with regard to their education systems and regards to the impact of virtual learning. And I'm wondering, is there any, is there any advocacy in terms of, from us or from a coalition of counties to the state to specifically address that potentially with funding for, you know, for, for wifi or equipment or what have you? I would hope that the governor and the state understands the impacts that COVID and this restriction on education and learning person is having. And I just wonder if there's any advocacy happening towards trying to get some resources. And I know the state's in a tight bind with financially, but resources to those communities and those schools that may not have the resources to lift up and try to find alternatives to in-person learning to help that population.
We are, we're part of a consortium, you know, Bay Area, Public Health and Office of Education throughout the Bay Area have weekly calls to discuss these issues and, and try and determine kind of what our best kind of collective strategy would be. Really, that's been more in terms of just what are the, what are the structures that we can, you know, who's thinking of how we're approaching the waiver application process? And how we're thinking about structuring out-of-classroom experiences for low-income children? That hasn't elevated that to the point of offering, you know, specific advocacy for increased funding. I don't know whether Angela knows whether or not that's been part of that. Obviously, the, the equity task force is being assembled and the Office of Education would be, you know, a, a, a source for that kind of advocacy depending on what the, what our objectives are. Angela, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think a couple of things. In the Canal District, we did put in wifi. And so that's something that was a really big focus in the spring and that project is being completed. And that was really a collaboration with the City of San Rafael and Marin Promise and MCOE. And then nonprofits in the canal. And we're looking at something similar in other parts of the community as well. I think maybe not so much state advocacy, but really local advocacy. I think we've been really happy to have the partnership of Marin Community Foundation as well to really look and focus on the educational equity issues for our students here in Marin.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, we've, we've sort of learned not to, you know, the state has a lot of challenges at that level. And we're, we're fortunate that we have a lot of great partners and resources locally. And obviously, that's, I think, most of, most of our success has been based on, on, on local solutions.
Right. And, and that's great. And we're fortunate here in Marin to have partners that have some deeper pockets to help facilitate that kind of action, whether it's wifi in the canal or, or laptops wherever. But not every county and community in the state has those resources. So whether or not the state can come through with any funding, I think it's just important to highlight the impact that this is having, not just in our community, but across the state. And to the degree that resources can be shifted to support those communities that don't have the pockets or hours to help level the playing field just a little bit on this distance learning thing. I think it's really important. It's great that we can, we can help ourselves here, but aren't we lucky, right? But there's a lot more to do. Last question, really quick, and it may be that neither of you have the answer to this. The no shirt, no shoes, no service rules that apply to most, most food establishments. I assume those are, those are requirements per having a permit to serve food? Yes?
I believe so.
Well, and I just, I, and I understand not wanting to force a business owner to have to confront someone who doesn't want to wear a mask. But I'm wondering how they deal with people who don't want to wear shoes or shirts. And then I would, for the folks who don't want to wear a mask, I'm like, well, are you willing to be told you have to wear a shirt and shoes? Don't seem to be complaining about that. Anyway, just.
It's the same. It, it's the same. I mean.
Exactly the same. It's health.
Yeah. It's the same. And it's, and, and there's, different owners will have a different tolerance for how confrontational they want to be in that space. But the fact is, is if someone walks in without a mask, I would expect their next act would not be trying to email us at, you know, at SIP violations, but to actually have a conversation with that person and say, you know, it's expected that you, just the way you'd handle that, someone if they walked in without their shoes on and their shirt.
Right. Okay. I think if there's no other question.